Charlie Brun.
Good evening, I want to talk about the wrong timing of all of this. The rushway that we've had to deal with this is shocking. We're talking about a radical change in our thinking. We're allowing a lot of funding like this in Decatur over 50 years. I have chosen to experience with two local laws that are changes. Now that has a chance to make a local law behind a school board elected. It took 10 years to get that elected school board. Now I guess citizens have the right to choose who is on that board. There's a lot of Decatur sign ordinance. Back in the twenties and thirties, signs could be placed over the storefronts on the sidewalk. Sometime later, the city decided to change it. So then only a flat sign could be on the front of a store. Have you seen how the community is still allowed all of the sidewalk signage? We all started committee that looked into all of this. And now we have a new city ordinance that allows us. These new sign use took five to six years to make and change into law. So you need to make, you guys need to take more time to look at all of this. Which brings me to the point. You have three choices tonight. One, allow the variance. Two, do not allow the variance. Three, table it for further study. And take the time that is needed to study of all this. If this took 40 years to change to an elected school board and six years to change a sign ordinance, okay? We should at least, very least, take a proper amount of time to study all of these decisions and consequences and not be rushing to making the decision that can affect so many and only do that in a couple of weeks. And why the rush? To satisfy a newcomer and his lawyer and his interpretation of our laws and thinking? And they might lose their deposit, we've heard, if the decision in their favor isn't done right away. That's not our problem. And you should have looked at it closer and found out the negatives before placing a deposit on it. A rushed decision tonight is a rushed decision. And no decision still allows for discussion on this type of business in the future. So we can talk about it. And at the very least, table this decision. So all the facts get in there and then I'll undo it before you make a bad call. City Council, your job is to represent the citizenry of Decatur property. You know that. Decatur is Decatur for a reason. We are a great place to live and to work. Please keep it that way. Thank you very much.
My name is Rebecca Webb. My husband and I live at 246 Health Second Street. Please know that I am not against meat processing plants. I like a good steak just as much as anyone. I am, however, very much against a meat processing plant inside the Decatur city limits. For many reasons, primarily the stench it would bring and all of the odors and everything else that people have talked about. My husband and I have invested as much as our Victorian home cost in various renovations and restoration. Many of our neighbors around us have put a lot of money and restoration effort in their historic homes as well. All of that time and money will have been wasted when our property values go down because of the odor that they even admitted to odor and the stench of an imp- processing plant. Even people who work at a meat processing plant don't necessarily want to live near a meat processing plant. They also mentioned jobs. Um, we are at an all-time low unemployment rate, even in this area. Everybody is hiring. There's not enough people to work for the jobs that we even have. So my request is that you vote no to changing this city ordinance. Don't kill Decatur, please.
Hi, my name is Kim Callens Riley and I live at 23 Homestead. I relocated back here after being born and raised here last year after being away for over 32 years. Waterhouses are the leading source of water pollution and high levels of nitrogen and phosphorus discharged into waterways. Birds can contribute to health issues. Some are asthma, autoimmune disorders, bacterial infections, cognitive impairments in children, and the list goes on. We will be told that this facility can implement all of the latest equipment to avoid all of these issues, but the reality is excursions do happen. I can tell you from personal experience, after working at a large chemical facility in Louisville, Kentucky with state-of-the-art equipment, robust safety and environmental processes, that excursions did happen and you did impact your neighbors. I have personally had to stand in front of a man and hand him a check because he was dying from a carcinogen exposure from our plant and have him look at me and say, "So this is all my life is worth?" Don't have to stand in front of somebody and say, "I'm sorry, this is all your life is worth." Decatur deserves better than this. People deserve better than this. Vote no.
My name is Jason Boone. I'm a lifelong Decatur resident. Um, I want to add on to the comments that Scott made earlier about Thunderbird. We also have a legitimate concern with all of the soft goods we handle in our facility, including foam and material that go into our boats, but we have no idea if these things get contaminated with the smell of cow waste, if it's possible to remedy those, or if we're talking about losses to our inventory. And also, as we're building our product, we don't know if we can get that smell out once it's in the material. As Scott mentioned earlier, we are dependent on ventilation from our west side that we draw to the east side of the building. And it is not fair for an outside business to come in and force us to make millions of dollars of changes to our, um, facilities, um, just for their benefit only when we were the pre-existing business. And there are hundreds of people that already depend on Thunderbird for their livelihood. Um, I also want to mention that we all recognize, and it has been brought up before, that obviously the county is the better place for this type of facility, not the city. So I referenced the county laws. The county ordinances on an intensive livestock operation, which is defined as any livestock operation that deals with more than 70 animals, mandate that the setback from a built-up area, which consists of five or more houses or public buildings within a thousand feet of each other, the setback is 3,000 feet. This facility would not even be allowable in the county if we weren't dealing with city limits. And it's absolutely unacceptable within city limits. So I know that you guys would do the right thing and maintain the prohibition on animal slaughter within city limits. Thank you.
Ron Gipper.
Um, my name is Ron Gipper and I live at 309 Kemper Lane. And so far, as far as I know, I'm next to the second closest person to this. I've measured it out. I am 4,000 feet door-to-door from the proposed site to my front door. I'm well within a mile. And I have some, uh, uh, article from the appraisal journal from 2015 that states, um, animal operation and residential property values. So we've all heard a lot from IO about the positive impact, but I haven't heard anything about the negative impact. This article clearly states that it affects negatively property values. As much as 88%, if you are within .1 of a mile of the facility. I did that measure out too, and would it include 22 homes on Deer Run that would be impacted up to 88% of their property value. As much as three miles out, it's still 6%. A little bit of math tells you that is the entire greater Decatur area. That's huge. We have 10,000 people plus here that are going to be affected. I would urge the city officials to remember that they are elected by the citizens of the Decatur area, not the counties, not IO properties, not the farmers that are speaking. In, in great respect to the farmers, you represent the citizens of Decatur, Indiana, and in overwhelming fashion, they are here tonight to tell you not to do this. Overwhelming. Don't do it. So I urge you to listen to the people who voted you in. Do what they want you to do, not because it's a great impact economically, they just don't want it. I rest my case.
Listen, I'm not sure. Um, I think we have Tim Ellerding on here, but this other one, is there a Tim Enderding? It's two different addresses on the same street. Tim, did you sign up? Did you try to sign up twice?
You know, I've heard my name pronounced so many different ways.
No, there's...
Yeah.
No, there's two of them.
No, I find the one after...
Well, come here, this one. I don't think this is you, but...
Yeah, that's me.
What about this one?
That's the petition.
Yeah, you don't want that?
Well, that was a list from tonight? Okay. All right. Well, first off, I want to say thank you all, um, for everything that you've done for the city of Decatur. You know, you guys have a tough job, you know? Um, and so what I am here tonight to do is basically to ask you to do one of those items that Charlie Brun asked you to do, and that is delay and look at this, uh, ordinance. Uh, the attorney here did a great job of telling you how the current 130 dash 03 is not really a good piece of legislation. And I tend to agree with that. So what I'm asking you to do is get rid of that legislation, but I'm also asking you to accept what I sent you this morning. I think I sent it, and I need to get you a hard copy, and I'll get you a hard copy right now. But what I did is I sent each one of you, and I don't think Phil has, you have a copy either, so I'll get you a copy, that I sent you a proposed ordinance that basically is based upon the current sexually-oriented business ordinance. Um, about 10 years ago, this body spent time talking about things like sexually-oriented businesses, spent a lot of time talking about it and came up with a very good ordinance that is defendable. So what I want you to do is to use that language and do the same thing, is limit where these can go. What I'm saying is that you can pass content-neutral regulations that address these secondary effects of a slaughterhouse. You're not going to suppress, you're not going to authorize the suppression of a slaughterhouse. You're going to regulate where a slaughterhouse goes. The current local zoning and other location criteria, of course, we all agree, they don't adequately, adequately protect the health, the safety, and the general welfare of the citizens. Therefore, you need to expand the regulation of things like slaughterhouses. You need to minimize and control the adverse secondary effects. You need to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Decatur. You need to preserve the quality of life, preserve the property values, and the character of those surrounding neighborhoods, those poor folks right next to this. And you need to deter the spread of urban blight that is going to take place if projects like this take place within the city of Decatur. This is a great project for our region. I've said this time and time again, but it doesn't belong in the city limits of Decatur. It's in the wrong location. That's pure and simple, the wrong location. So please, I ask you to put this thing on hold, to take the necessary time to research this in ways necessary, to come up with an ordinance that actually has some meat to it. And I ask you to consider the ordinance that I presented to you tonight. Thank you once again for everything you do. You're wonderful people, you do a lot of great for our city, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Alex Mendez.
Hi, I'm Alex Mendez, most of you know me, local artist, uh, didn't get this body by eating vegetables alone. And, uh, I don't think anybody here would be in opposition if it was outside of city limits. Simply put, it would, it could be here outside of city limits. They are asking you to make an amendment to this code to save them money because they found a facility that they can retrofit. So you want to change our quality of life to save them money? That doesn't make sense to me. We have all put too much time in making Decatur better. Seven years on the design committee, and we want to throw that away to save money for a company that has never been here, that doesn't have roots here. How many people here have two or three generations here? I moved back, I moved my family back because I believe in Decatur. And it's your job to help us keep growing. And unfortunately, we don't want this here in our city. We believe in Decatur. And I feel bad for you guys because I don't envy you. You guys have been getting inundated with emails and phone calls and belated on social media, and that sucks. But you guys should be proud that you have a community that cares, that wants Decatur to succeed. It's that simple. And I would love for them to come here and build a facility outside of city limits. If it's that lucrative, if Decatur is that great for the company, come here and build the facility and bring all that money here. But don't belittle and change our quality of life to save them money.
Brittany Hall.
Hello, my name is Brittany Hall. I live on the corner of Deer, the Deer Run neighborhood on 28th Street. I can literally hit the building with a ball. Um, I'll make this statement short and sweet, unlike the deal we would get with any vote that would allow the slaughterhouse or addressing of animals in city limits. As a mother, I have many concerns with the traffic increase, environmental effect, et cetera. Every aspect of this concerns me. And I hope that everyone up here today could sympathize with not wanting a slaughterhouse in your backyard. Please vote no to this. Thank you.
Carrie Shetler.
My name is Carrie Shetler and I'm the mayor and the city council. I thank you for taking the time to listen to this and everything, but ultimately, don't forget what you're actually voting on. It's the ordinance. You've got 4H kids, you've got FFA kids, you've got... ...to Belmont. But they can go hunting and everything else, but they actually can't even process or even take care of the processing of their animal when they go hunting. You've got where the state of Indiana has been working to make it so that people can raise chickens and that in their backyard. Technically, according to your ordinance, you can't kill them here. You actually kill them here, you're in violation of this ordinance. These are all things that the FFA and 4H has been working on growing. I spent the last several weekends judging FFA competitions, and the kids are talking about this type of stuff, that they don't have places that they could go to be able to learn things because their cities have ran them out, that they've got to go find and beg neighbors' houses and everything else to be able to learn. You're talking about how people need to learn trades? This is a trade. This isn't something that you necessarily have to go learn. Anywhere else, you can actually also learn it hands-on. We're fortunate enough that somebody's petitioning you to actually look at the ordinance. That's actually the downfall of what they're actually looking at. Whether or not you choose to bring the slaughterhouse in is a whole nother issue, but you have an ordinance at hand that is very outdated and that you need to look at what you're doing for the future of your kids and what you're teaching them. Because right now, what are you teaching them? You're also showing that if you were to do anything, so if they were to go hunting for a rabbit or a tur- we have wild turkeys in our backyard here in Decatur. We can't hunt them. We can't kill them and park them in our yard. You can't do anything to them because you have this ordinance in place. I'm asking you to actually take a look at that, just the first sentence of this ordinance. That's what you actually need to look at, and that's where I stand on this. Thank you.
Eric Gage.
Um, and last one, it's like Brett Doctor? Okay, so that was the end of the public comment. Now it's in the council's hands. Does anybody want to make a comment?
Well, I prepared a statement, but as I listened, I kind of have dissected my statement. First, I just want to say I echo the comments of Attorney Trent N. R. Rickard that there's a lot of misinformation, threats, and attacks that would happen on social media and oftentimes face-to-face. It's just inappropriate. Uh, just wanted to make that as record, and a lot of people in this room are probably guilty of that. It's just not necessary. Um, so this, uh, for me, this discussion should not be about changing the ordinance because this company wants to move to the property of the old Dean Ice Cream Building, but instead the discussion should be, does the city of Decatur want to allow the slaughter of animals and are animal harvesting facilities within city limits? That's what we should be looking at. The property we're discussing tonight is zoned I-2. I brought this map along. All the areas in red on this map are zoned I-2. So saying yes to this development, you're saying yes to allowing slaughterhouses or harvesting facilities in all of the locations in red. If this is approved, all, the only challenge they face is meeting the criteria of the BZA that could be there in any of these locations in red. So how do you approve this change without having a single conversation about the big picture, possible future of animal harvesting facilities in the city limits, and the long-term impacts of this? I was given a few weeks to make a decision that could change the landscape of Dec- of Decatur, and that's not enough time for me. I firmly believe that we must maintain the integrity of the current ordinance of not allowing the slaughter of animal in the city limits. I've taken out a lot of the rest of it. I know we have to vote on something tonight, so to get it started, I will make the motion to not change ordinance 130.02.
I just want to make a statement along with Scott too, and I've heard a lot of cheering and clapping and everybody excited, but all the people that sit up here are members of this community too. We feel the same way you do, but a lot of us got attacked over this when you could have came and had a face-to-face conversation with us and tell us how you felt. Um, we live in this kid, city, our kids grew up in this city, and this, it's glad to see everybody come out, but a moment like this didn't make me proud of the city of how we handled ourselves. We can handle ourselves in a professional way without beating everybody else down. There was no need for it. Like Alex said earlier, he was right on point, there's no need to belittle anybody. We're all up here sitting here trying to do the best for our city, just like you were. And we're all approachable, you could find us all and come talk to us. Um, I'm along with Scott on this, I feel like it's not in my place, and the people have spoke, and that is my job to listen to the people, so I'm going to second his motion.
Before we would vote on that, Dan, what does that mean?
So there's been a motion and a second made to, um, not amend, it's essentially a motion to maintain the current code section that doesn't in any way, shape, or form prevent council from further investigating and later on bringing up a new question to consider or a potential amendment in the future, but at this point in time, there has been a motion and a second made to deny amendment or maintain the current, the current code section.
Hey, I, I have, I have a question. Are we voting now? You got a, you got a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to vote.
So, and what do we, if you're, if you want to keep the, uh, the ordinance as it is, how will be, will be voting, will be saying yea or nay?
There, there is a, there's a motion and a second to leave 130.02 as it stands, and it will be a roll call vote. I think Matt has...
And if I, if I want to leave it the same for this time, then I say yea?
That's what the motion is, to leave it the same.
Thank you for the clarity.
Matt? So if we were all, if any of us were in yea, we're saying we're not changing it now. We could change it next council meeting.
The motion before council to consider is to maintain the ordinance in its current state, period. That's, uh, that's the motion before the council right now.
My stance on that motion, Matt, is that there's not enough people in favor of this at the moment for us to responsibly move forward. And that's, I don't want to speak for Scott, but that's where I'm at.
Hey, can I say a few words before, uh, we make the vote?
Yes.
Uh, first of all, everybody that's there, I apologize for not being in the meeting live. I had a vacation scheduled several months ago, and this kind of came upon us pretty quick. I'd like to thank the community for all the feedback and interest in the betterment of Decatur. I'd also like to thank, say special thanks to O and I for showing interest in starting a business in Decatur. You've shared your business plan, you've gone through the application process, you've shared information with myself and these, in the county, excuse me, the city, the city council members. We took, uh, employees that are department heads and people that, uh, that are, that are going to be affected by this. Uh, we've taken tours, you've given us, you've been gracious enough to, to allow us to take tours to understand what you're truly wanting to do. I just wanted to say thank you so much for that, for allowing us to, to do our due diligence in this matter and, and inviting stakeholders and the community to your, your facility to, to take tours. And final, I, I was elected to represent District 3 of Decatur. I've received emails, phone calls, and texts, and the, the representation of the people that vote for me who I represent was about 80% to the negative and about 20% to the positive. With this in mind, I'll cast my vote. Thank you to all of you for being civil in this situation.
Any other discussion?
I guess I still, I'm trying to wrap my head around if we table the, there's a motion and a second to keep it as is, and if we approve that, then that is for now. This could be revisited next council meeting, next month, next year, five years from now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because I'm not necessarily a no to changing laws that we have on the city. We do it all the time. We have a process. We have Board of Zoning and Appeals. Um, Scott and I, I will disagree somewhat, this doesn't give a blanket if we were to allow this to say you have a slaughterhouse anywhere in industrial zone. It would come back to if an applicant came before Kurt's office, he would say it's in an industrial zone, it must go to the BZA. We have a BZA for a reason, to ferret out, this could work if you did this, 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 and this. And if you meet those, then it's possible it could be passed. So I don't want to, I don't want to just say we're against anything or for anything. I'm promoting the process, and I do think we need a better law, as was stated with slard, with food processing. And maybe we're not ready yet to, to change that. I think we need to investigate it further. We've been told not to rush it, yet Tim Ellerding brings us a proposed ordinance that we should pass now when we just read it, and we didn't ask him to. We have an attorney that puts together. Okay, he said to consider it. So we will consider it, along with our own attorney. It's just I don't want anything done quickly. I don't want to push business away from Decatur. Because there is due diligence being done. I've heard, I've seen a lot of painting with... I've heard, I've seen a lot of painting with broad brushes. Everybody's for this, everybody's against that. It's not true. It's simply, from our standpoint, we are hearing from many people. After the last meeting, a lady came up to me who lives one mile out of town and said, "Did I hear that correctly? That we could possibly have cattle processed locally instead of harvest, hauling them up to Michigan?" I'm all in favor of it, but I'm scared to speak up in a meeting of this nature. Cause some are. Not everybody's a public speaker that wants to speak. Since then, I've had many emails.
What proportion?
What proportion? I would say similar to what Craig has heard, 80% against and 20% for.
So can you raise this?
I can, Jean. I can. I've seen...
Okay. Got it, got it. We're all in, I have her opinion, you have a different opinion. That's what you talked about earlier. There's no reason to... That's what I'm saying, that's...
Damn. So you asked us to do our due diligence. Did you not?
Okay.
As long as further, I have a chance to talk about due diligence.
We're doing, this is the process, and we, we have meetings every month, and this is how they run. If, once there's two motions, there is discussion, so...
So I don't know anything about the animal processing business. I've never been a part of that. I'm a business guy. So I went to people I know. I can listen to the attorney, I can listen to Riggs, just like you can. I can also listen to all of you, and I've tried to. I have emailed you, I have called you, I have asked you to talk with these folks, and many have. I had many residents of Deer Run that aren't here, that have been through this facility, and after having some questions answered, are not 100% against it. Some are for it, frankly. Um, I had an email... Yes, they are, sir. True, because some of them don't wanna come before this body. We don't just hear from you. True.
No, cause we're not, we're not amended.
We're, we're, we're doing exactly what, we're belittling them, and their job wasn't to us, but they, we also have to listen to that.
Thank you.
We elected them, we voted for them, so he has the right to speak to us, and we at least owe him that.
Thank you, Alex. So I did speak with people I know in this industry, from Decatur, or from Adams County, or from the area. I spoke with many of you, remember, uh, Langerk Meats, Fred Langerk. He's been a butcher for 60 years in this county. I spoke with Tom Kruegerberg, a butcher who just retired from Kroger after 40 years in this industry. Both tell me, from when they started to where we're at now, it's a completely different process of butchering meat. It's a clean environment, it's not something that throws them red flags if done the right way. I got an email today from a local veterinarian, very much in favor of this process. He lives near the Deer Run subdivision, he runs Decatur Vet Clinic, he runs Bluffton Vet Clinic. He reached out to me specifically, I asked if I could share his name, cause I'm not here to pit neighbor against neighbor by any means. What I'm here really to say is, we can have agriculture businesses and state-of-the-art businesses and restaurants if they follow certain parameters and certain rules. We could vote that we don't think this fits a certain parameter, but we could vote that it does fit a certain parameter. There's reasons for exceptions, and as we move forward, I think we need to remember that. The way things were always done isn't the way they are today. Things change. I've had many emails from local farmers. I've had many emails from you folks that are against us for your specific reason, from animal rights groups to people that live right next to it. Colin, thank you for emailing me. I do appreciate it. Mrs. Cowan's on my phone. I do appreciate your concern. We are concerned, too. That's why we want to do this correctly. I had an email today from a county commissioner in Howard County, in Union County, sorry, named Howard Curry, very much in favor of this for Indiana, for the region, for farmers. Some people are very much for this.
Within the city limits?
Yes. I had, I had a meeting yesterday with Cooper Farms Plant Manager, Michelle Dues. I wanted to learn more about the process. It's different than ours. All of these processes are a little bit different. You can't say this is exactly like how they do it in Coldwater, Ohio, how they do it in Vanwork, how they do it in Lima. We've visited those facilities, some of us, we can't all go at the same time, but we are doing our due diligence, and I want to allow any type of business that may want to invest in Decatur if they follow certain rules. That's why we have a process. So please, trust that we are looking at all angles of these situations. It's not, this isn't just, doesn't just affect the people in the Deer Run subdivision. This affects the city, this affects the county, this affects the region. So work with us, please. Yes.
How much did you contact the EPA, the environmental...
I did not personally.
Maybe, maybe we should get them involved.
Sure.
Before we made a...
I did talk to Dr. Mike Hubble, a local veterinarian for 50 years, and asked him his opinion. Is this something, what am I not seeing? He, he agreed that I could share his name. He said, "This company thinks they would run their business, they would find out that the USDA would run their business." This would be the most federally regulated business in the city. It would be the most federally regulated and state and city regulated business in the industrial park.
If the EPA agrees with you, they might not agree with you. That's what you gotta look at, dude.
Right. And understandable, but when we're asked to do our due diligence, know that we are trying to do our due diligence. I don't personally think two weeks was enough time to do that due diligence after hearing from folks. I also hear, still hear a lot of misinformation, like our wastewater plant can't handle this, or our water, we don't have enough water. Those are simply not true. We could accept this factory and another factory and another factory, and I worry that turning anybody away that, long-term, could be a problem. You know, we have a restaurant coming in, proposed on 13th Street currently. It's not a done deal. Should we not allow that restaurant to come into Decatur because Subway's hiring and Hardee's is hiring? That's silly, folks. We want businesses to come to Decatur, if they do it the right way, under our rules and the rules you tell us to operate under.
I'm, I'm sorry, and I, I mean, no disrespect, because again, okay, I don't wanna be in your guys' shoes. I don't even like being rejected for my culture. I know, I literally try, so I can't imagine being inundated with these kind of emails. But I simply do not agree with, oh, we can't allow this business in because Subway's hiring. We, we are at 1% unemployment rate, and that 1% will not go work in a slaughterhouse if they're not gonna go work in the factory that has been here for 70 years, that their grandfather worked at, or that their father was pensioned from. It just, it just, it, to me, and this is...
I don't mean no disrespect, but if this was time for him to talk, and we gave him that, so you're, I appreciate what you're saying, but this is, we've heard from you all now, it's for us to discuss and vote.
I, I think I've said, said my piece. I just, I want you folks to understand, we're walking a slippery slope when you're turning business away from Decatur, because we need to look at any and all businesses that wanna come here. Did you know we have a business that makes a million egg cartons a day?
Yeah. We do.
You, but many people drive by it and have no clue what they do in that building, because they meet certain parameters of business. All we're saying is, I would like to look at any and all proposals with the due diligence that comes for us. Okay, I'll be quiet.
Okay. Motion and second on the floor. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes, at this time.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes, with further investig- investigation.
Okay, um, ordinance 130.02 will stay as it is. Will we start, will we start the meeting? What's going on? Please, put them ahead. I can't find any of them. Tony or Brad? Guys, can we keep it down for a little longer? We do have to finish the meeting there. Josh? Kevin? Jeff? Is Carrie back there? Good? Jamie?
Good.
They leave from council.
I just wanna thank Iowa Properties. I, I know a lot of people are sitting here and they're against Iowa Properties, but they have been all but respectful, and anybody that had a question, they would answer the question. Um, so don't take it against this company. They're trying, and I really feel, I sit here and I feel that this is a need. We don't wanna have all our packaging out in a, owned by an overseas company. It's gonna have... The only thing I heard a lot of people say is, put it outside in the county, which, which would be fine, but what happens if it's two miles in the county and it's blowing right into the city? So, and then they have to put the regens in. I'm just putting that out there, I'm not saying it's a good idea, but this company did do their homework, and I feel like they're a good company, so just don't give them the short end of the stick, is all I need to say.
Any else?
The mayor appointed Alex Amesford to Decatur Park Board for, for, to finish the term.
Drew Jarenkowski?
Okay. Um, March 9th, and terminates December 31st. Uh, we just need to make that a matter of record.
I'll make a motion to make that a matter of record.
Second.
Um, we stopped doing a roll call. Motion and second, roll call vote.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I just, information for council, um, when we, the State Department Council did our audit, they just said we need to have a policy for, a threshold for our assets, so if you guys wanna think about that, so we can draw up a policy for that. Um, I think I sent you information. And then, not to rush you on the ARP funds, but we have discussed about the garbage trucks and recycle trucks. Um, I wasn't sure that you wanted to use the ARP money.
We have to have a fund available first.
Yeah, we have to develop a plan, so I didn't know if that's...
That could be part of the plan?
I didn't know if that was part of it, or you want, I am looking into the lease purchase.
Right.
Um, I've got a couple rates to look at, and other, I'm getting some quotes from the Indiana Bond Bank, so I'll look at that.
Can we shoot for next meeting to try to have an idea for something? I know we talked over, do we all wanna bring, or... I would say get that done first.
So the thing is about the plan, it can, it can be amended at any moment. You just, you have to come up with a plan before you spend any of it, but it can be amended at any point.
So we're not locked, once we...
The best thing to do is put percentages towards certain things, and then as you go forward, you get amended, you get amended at any time.
I feel more comfortable.
Would you like us to come up with some percentages to help get this done and...
Well, there's no rush, but I just thought if you wanted the garbage truck this year and recycle trucks?
Yeah, I think it'd probably be the idea to start coming up with percentages.
I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Just to get it...
You know what, if everybody just came up with a list of things they wanna put the ARP money towards, and then that night, we can come up with some percentages in the meeting.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, just to get it done and moving forward.
How much money is there?
Uh, we've got 1.2 on you, and we're gonna get another one. But then the other thing is the additional preparation process, it's not actually budgeted in this year's budget.
Right. Anything else? Any else from council? Anne? So we still have to fair a roll call vote, so is there a motion to pay the claims?
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Motion and second to pay the claims, roll call vote.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Roll call vote.
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?